Oh, take it.
No, I know.
Retro, so it looks like it's from the 70s, the one we just bought, but it was like in 2016 or 2017.
It's 7:00 PM on Monday, October 7th, 2024, and I will call this regular city council meeting to order. I do want to thank those who are joining us in the audience this evening, and if you would join us in the flag salute, and Councilmember Peretti, if you would lead us.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, Councilmember Strater has asked to be excused this evening.
Move to excuse, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Peretti to excuse Councilmember Strater this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried six zero. And I just want to note that this evening, our Public Works Director Maddens with us, Planning Manager Stahlnecker, Attorney Soaming, Interim Finance Director Robek, Chief Hernandez, and City Clerk Tricia Summers. Planning Manager Stahlnecker, is there any signups on the citizen participation? No, okay. So moving on to additions and deletions, what starts on, it doesn't start on any page. Do you have any additions or deletions for tonight's agenda? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, which starts on page three of your packet, I will take a motion to pass. Councilmember Cedar?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Cedar and seconded by Mayor Potem Whitaker to pass the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried six zero. Council, the first thing we have this evening is a presentation from Pierce Transit on their long-range plan. I will turn the floor over to their representative, Darren.
Is this on? Good evening, Mayor Sherrill and fellow council members. Thank you for having us. We were invited here this evening to give you an update on our all-new, brand-new Destination 2045 Long Range Plan and where we are in the process. You're not seeing this on?
No, the TVs are not working, but they do have a printed copy in front of them.
You have it, okay, good, okay. Well, maybe I'll say next page then, so the one that says the Long Range Plan on the left. There's four objectives, key objectives, that we'll be looking at in this plan. Really, the idea behind it is that we do them every four years. We started our very first plan in 2016, and that was Destination 2040. We did a minor update in 2020. Unfortunately, we couldn't do any outreach or presentations or anything by the time that plan was ready, COVID hit, so it was all virtual or not at all. As you all know, all the cities in Pierce County, as well as King County, and the county itself are required to update their comprehensive plans, so we are focusing on making sure that what we're looking at, long-term vision, closely aligns with all of the city's and county's long-term vision for growth and development. We'll also be updating our performance measures and targets that, in this plan, is part of our appendix. If you think about even eight years ago, we did not have bus rapid transit in the works. We also did not have an enhanced bus, and we did not have runner microtransit. So those are three modes that we have no kind of guidance for long-term, so we'll be updating that as well. And then, of course, as it says in the handout, you know, referencing our last two plans, our first two plans, as well as our bus system recovery and restoration plan that was formally adopted by our board back in December of 2023. So really, if you look at the next page, it says the focus areas. I kind of think of these as the sun and the satellites around it, or the planet and the satellites around it, and then the planet in the middle, the dark circle, is really our goal. And again, it's going back to looking at implementing fixed route and high-capacity growth scenarios countywide, not just in our current service area, and I'll talk about that for a second. There's six, as I said. All six are needed to directly support any of the four 20-year vision networks that we'll review with you, and those are for growth and expansion of our fixed route system. I'd like to focus on three that are within our control, and those we call the three Bs. It's namely buses, base infrastructure, and bodies. We also can say buildings and bodies. And what we mean is additional bus operators and journey-level mechanics. All are critical components to any proposed expansion, as you likely know. We're also providing as much service as we can right now at our current base in Lakewood. We're really built out, and with Sound Transit continuing to be a partner, as well as introducing double-decker buses very soon, and articulated coaches, we have, we're built out. We really don't have any more space to offer any more service for either ourselves or them, so we're kind of at a critical point in our development. Of course, none of this is possible without additional funding, and I'll stress that throughout the plan. We're assuring that it's clearly called out in this outreach and all of our engagement efforts, as well as throughout the plan. In fact, the plan's going to be what's known as a fiscally constrained vision, and that's actually an oxymoron. And what we mean by that is that the LRP will include cost assumptions for all phases or aspects of any proposed growth and scenarios. So it's going to be as simple as if you want this much more transit, this is what it's going to cost. If you want this much more, this is what it's going to cost, and so on. And again, that's buildings, buses, and bodies, more than anything. Next slide. You'll see key trends. I like this cool autonomous micro mini-bus. Don't fear, we don't see this coming anytime soon, although our friends at the Jacksonville Transit Authority are already looking into this as a way to kind of supplement service, especially in a downtown loop. I think for us, and I don't know if any of you read the New York Times, they tried one somewhere, and I can't remember what city it was in, and it was an anonymous taxi, and it did not stop for a fire truck or an ambulance going by, so I think there's a little work to do. But certainly for us, we've been asked over and over again by Point Defiance Park, why don't you run buses in the park? Why can't you take people from the parking lot up to the zoo and the aquarium? And a 40-foot bus just wouldn't fit contextually. We'd be knocking down trees, and people that are riding their bikes are walking or anything. It just doesn't fit, but we think something like this is certainly, there's a future for it. You know, as you all know, technology is coming a lot faster than ever before. I remember just a few years ago saying, "God, could you imagine if you could use your handset to tell you how long the next bus was going to arrive, or use your handset to pay for your fare?" So I think a lot of these things that were very futuristic, even four or five years ago, will be coming sooner rather than later. I understand that the University of Charlotte, University of North Carolina Charlotte campus is using an autonomous shuttle, and it goes on a loop, as well as the Sun River, I believe it's called, which is a large retirement community in Arizona. So again, we want to make sure that we're at least watching what's going on nationally and trying to recognize these trends, kind of with a proverbial crystal ball. Next slide is outreach. We're trying to have as much as robust of an outreach and engagement process as we can. This is just some numbers that we have done up to date, and these are actually continuing to grow, making sure that we're meeting with all of our jurisdictional planning partners like yourselves, as well as community events, farmers' markets, really getting out there and doing as much as we can to make sure that the public gets to weigh in on it, and multiple times, so it's an iterative process. Next slide, please. We started the outreach process engaging the public in July, and it was the entire month of July, and we used something that was called Social Pinpoint, and it's actually something that we used in our Destination 2040 update back in 2020. And the idea behind it is people could pin a note throughout the service area, including outside the service area, as long as they remained within Pierce County, to say where they'd like to see growth, maybe extending a route, expanding a route, adding a route, really anything and everything. And it was really successful. By comparison, we got 700 responses this time around. When we used it in 2020, we only got 163, so we think it's really robust, and it's a great way, as you know, online engagement is becoming more and more important. This is just a smattering of kind of what we heard over and over, and really, nothing too terribly different to what we heard when we did the same engagement last year as part of our Bus System Recovery and Restoration Plan. Most of our passengers or customers are midday riders. Four and a half miles is still about our average trip. And believe it or not, our peak is really 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We don't really have the folks that are, you know, using our system to get to maybe Sound Transit, to get to Seattle or Points Beyond. It's more of a crosstown, a local provider, and we do have a very high number of transit-dependent passengers. And what I mean by that is those are folks that rely on us for their only mode of transport, and I'll talk about that in a second as we develop the scenarios. Next slide is partner coordination. Your very own Angelique was able to meet with us, and we made sure that we met with everybody one-on-one to talk about your comp plans, and really where we show growth and development as we start to develop our route extension, our brand-new route network. And just again, making sure that wherever we think we should go is where you feel we should go. And again, it's really based on the four pillars. It's housing, population, employment, and equity. And equity being, what I talked about before, is where are the people that live, that most rely on our system? Obviously, you can do population and employment and housing projections, because those are formally adopted by the Pusser Sound Regional Council, as well as the county into 2044. But for equity, I tend to think that the neighborhoods that need it the most that exist today are probably likely to need them in the future. I don't see too terribly much change in 20 years. And again, that's hard to predict, but we want to make sure that equity is a key focus of anything and everything that we do as we continue to offer more service over time. Also, on the maps that you'll see, any place where the shading is darker, it's just a greater intensity. In other words, greater population, greater housing, greater employment, et cetera. So getting into this, briefly into the service expansion scenarios, and I'll pause, because there's a whole another presentation, which is actually an online open house that we would ask you to take a look at. If you go to pierstransit.org/longrangeplans, and it should be on the handout, plans plural, there's something called Story Map, and what that is, is we've had our consultant narrate an open house to show you what the system could look like before and after at these different scenarios. And they're all based on service hours, and service hours is as simple as, it's a budgetary tool. All transit agencies use it, and we operate, or we're budgeted for 500,000 service hours, but we're currently operating about 482, so 500 is where we'll get back to post, as part of our post-COVID recovery. And it's as simple as the operator gets in the coach, punches the clock, takes, goes off the base, picks up somebody, does their route, takes breaks, comes back, last customer gets off, they bring the bus back. If they're out 10 hours, that's 10 service hours. It's really that simple. So it's not revenue hours. It's the time that actually the bus is out, off the base. With that, if you keep 500,000 in mind, for another 20% to 25%, we could really introduce almost a show-up-and-go system, and what we mean by that is that you don't really need a schedule. It runs much later, much earlier, and on weekends. For half again as much, we'd be at 735,000 service hours, and this is something that we looked at deeply in our 2020 update. And it's kind of the ideal system that's still, again, it's not, we don't have the funding for it, but we think it's probably more feasible than the 900, and the 900 is 80% more, and that goes out into areas that left us back in 2012. So places like Auburn, Bonny Lake, Frederickson Graham, South County, East County, where there's a lot of growth and development, DuPont, and these are places that have talked to us about possibly annexing back into the, into the, excuse me, PTBA, which is Public Transportation Benefit Area, or Pierce Transit Service Area. But again, they'd have to vote themselves back in through taxation, so it's not something that an elected official or proprietary, what am I trying to say, not proprietary, but kind of a transit, like the transit, I can't think of the name of it, the one that put ST3 on the ballot, I'm totally drawing a blank. It'll come to me. It was a group that got enough signatures to get the ST3 initiative put on the ballot. It was not Sound Transit. They couldn't do it themselves. Transportation Choices Coalition, another TCC, and they were the ones. And that's, we would need a champion, so somebody that could do that for us. You probably know we only collect six tenths of 1%. We're allowed up to nine tenths, and that's six cents on every $10 purchase, so even with seven tenths or eight tenths, we could still do a lot more, and that's kind of what we're hoping for as we put this plan together, that we can find a champion. Next slide. This is, I don't know if Angelique wants to comment on this at all, but this is what we showed her and your team when we met about some new routes that we would be introducing based on your land use changes up through 2044. There's a new 66 route and a new 498 route, as well as really bumping up service on the 500 and the 501. So you'd go from two routes to four routes within that scenario. Not too terribly much more I can say about it, but certainly if you do, I'm going to push you again toward that online open house, because he really explains the network, and you can do a deeper dive and look exactly where those routes go. It's important that we emphasize, too, that any of these new routes will ideally serve new Sound Transit service, so the new light rail stations, whether they're at Fife or Portland Avenue, or wherever they're going to be. We're making sure that any new service that we offer will have routes that will directly connect to the light rail stations and meet the Sound Transit expansion, also for Sounder, because as you know, they're looking to go beyond Lakewood down to Tillicum and DuPont ultimately. The next slide is just a little bit, a little bit bigger map that doesn't have any of the information. And again, it's where the highest projected population growth areas are shaded in gray. I talked about a new 498, which would start at the Fife One Line Light Rail Station and terminate at the Auburn Sounder Station. We'd also promote the 402 to our first fast, frequent, and reliable route. And what that means is if you see that, it's an idea that we basically stole from King County Metro. It's a, I like to maybe call it a BRT Lite, so it's something where you could put transit signal prioritization, and ideally, it's a skip-stop overlay or an additional route that's much more travel-time competitive with a car. We're very likely to add customer amenities such as off-board fare collection and real-time arrival information and things like that. We're even going to be introducing push-to-talk for the side impaired that says, you know, the one will be here in five minutes or whatever, so they don't have to be able to read it, which is great. So these are little things that really enhances the customer experience, and we can do this for a lot less than a 10 to 30 million a mile bus rapid transit system. And there are routes that we feel that should be promoted, that could be promoted to this, the 41 and the 54 and the 202 are other examples, very, very high-performing routes. Your 500 has been in the top five for the last six years, so these are routes that continue to perform really well. They're not quite bus rapid transit candidates, but certainly we think that we could do a lot more with a little bit more funding. So you'll see that throughout the network, too, and that is explained in the online open house. The discussion page, really, I wasn't, of course, I can open it up for questions, but these are really more rhetorical. I'd just like to, as you take a look at the online open house, and I hope you will, you kind of keep these questions in mind, you know, is what we're showing, where you think transit should go in 20 years' time. Are we missing anything? We're not really looking for kudos. We're looking for any information on any new growth development, whether it's multifamily, or new commercial, or maybe a school, or something that's a transit trip generator. It's important that we know, and we learn from our jurisdictional planning partners more than anybody about what's going on out there. The next slide, of course, is the schedule, and I believe that's in your handout, too, kind of shows you where we are in the process. We just finished our second round of outreach with the public, and now we're into these presentations to our jurisdictional planning partners, as I mentioned. We'll be releasing the first draft LRP at the end of November, and then I was kind of, as we go through the holidays, make sure folks have plenty of time to look through it and make comments and stuff. Then we'll take another draft of the board, probably in the mid-February timeframe, clean that one up, and make sure that we're incorporating all the comments, and then finalize it in April and take it to our board for formal adoption. So it's an exciting process. I mean, we're certainly optimistic. You know, it's, our CEO, Mike Griffiths, if he's ever presented to you, always says, "We're very proud of what we do, but we're also providing the absolute most transit that we can based on current funding and operators and journey-level mechanics, and with that shortage, it really constrains us." So we're trying to do the best we can, and I know that with just even a little bit more funding and stuff, it would really, really create the system that the county deserves and is going to need in 20 years' time, frankly, with all the growth. You all know 12,000 new residents coming every year from now on, so there's going to be a lot of transit dependency, and I think the time is right for us to take something out there and show what it could look like with just a little more, a little bit more funding. So with that, I can open it up for questions. The last slide just shows, I talked about community events, social media. We're utilizing the ArcGIS Story Map I mentioned, which is the platform for this online open house, self-guided. And if you'd like to subscribe for updates on our website, you can put your email in. And then anytime we have new information, whether it's more surveys, or maps, or any new information, we'll make sure that you're notified. So with that, I can open it up for questions, or, I know it's a lot, and I purposely didn't show you the maps, because that's kind of a whole nother, that's a whole nother presentation.
Councilmember Wayland?
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you very much for your presentation.
My pleasure.
As fast as it's been.
I'm sorry?
As fast as it's been, it's a little hard to follow. So what's the growth of the bus ridership within the city of Milton over the last 20, over the last 20 years?
I think I have it with me, actually. I can tell you, using 2023 data, you, 33,000 rides, 33,174. You average 59 weekday boardings, 30 weekend boardings, and you have 22 stops in the whole city. I can't tell you year over year, but I could certainly look, find out for you, give back to you if that's okay.
Well, I'm just a little curious, because I think that helps us understand our contribution to improving the bus system.
Well, I'd be happy to look at that for you. That'd be very easy, yeah.
Yeah, considering we're one of the only sections on the map, my page does not have a number on it, so I wish it had been shown up and so forth, so we could refer back to it. I guess we're considered to be a very low ridership town?
No, not necessarily. I mean, not.
I'm looking at this presentation, and I think it's categorized by its color as a low, maybe, medium.
That might have to do with future growth and population growth. I know, looking at the numbers, your city is not projected to grow as fast as some of your neighbors, but you'd still be doubling your routes, though. We'd be introducing two more, as well as bringing the 402 up to that fast, frequent, and reliable network. So there is certainly investment opportunities that we see.
Believe me, I'd like investing in Pierce County riding. I really do. I know we're not a very high ridership district, so we're supporting a lot of other districts to prosper ahead of us. We're just getting there, so they're growing faster. I'm asked questions about how much money do we invest and so forth, and the citizens invest, and the ridership investment and so forth, and what's been new in the ridership from the city of Milton to other local areas? How do I go to a citizen and say, "Well, we've increased ridership down to Puyallup because they got more stores, or we've increased ridership to Tacoma because things have changed in Tacoma"? How do I easily, and I'm not trying to sell it, I'm supporting it. I'm trying to find a way to support it that the general public that I speak with understands it a little better. You've gone 100 miles an hour, okay, and without, you know, the ability to see which actually print you're looking at and so forth. How do we gently let folks know that requested increases and so forth in public transportation and so forth, who are only affecting a small minority of the citizens in Milton who pay for it? A lot of folks don't use it. How do you convince them that it's?
Well, I think there's a couple ways. One thing I could do is, if you'd like, is when I get back, I could take a little deeper dive into the Bus System Recovery Plan and see about your routes, see what we heard from the public, and kind of give you a tailored kind of executive summary for that. Be happy to do that. And then I think with your plan, the same, with this plan, I think I would do the same thing as me, is have something provided for your city alone that specifically speaks to your routes and growth, and why we've chosen to add these two routes, as well as beef up the existing routes. That might help, because one would be more shorter term, and the other one would be longer term. Be happy to put that together for you. Wouldn't take us but a few days.
Yeah, because we do have a low ridership on the system. So maybe we're not paying our fair share in fares, but we're looking to pay our fair share in growth.
Yes, and I think, you know, one thing I would stress is that with the new administration, presidential administration that came in in 2021, they, what we've heard from the FTA is not, don't focus on ridership as much. The old days was how many, was bodies on buses, bodies on trains, bodies on subways. Now they're really looking at an equity focus. It's not as important that you have high ridership as that you're serving the people that need it the most. So I think it really created a new opportunity for us to reevaluate. WashDOT does the same thing. Any dollar that we get from WashDOT through discretionary funding, we have to report back and say, "Which equity community did you improve service to? Show us. Show us where you put these dollars, whether it's electric buses, you know, lower polluting buses, or really anything new service, anything and everything." So I think there's a way to show you, and again, I would ask for your opinion, not, "Hey, look at how wonderful we are", I would ask you, "Would you agree with this? Would you agree with these methods? And would you agree with where we are showing growth?" And I can gladly put that together for you for both the short term and the long term. It'd be my pleasure.
How can you help us improve ridership by communicating with the public, or the city and so forth, or going to places where folks may want to go more to than the route we have and so forth?
Yeah, that's tough, because it's, you know, transit's a tough sell, because people say, "Well, if it was better, I'd ride it more", but if people rode it more, it would be better, so it's a constant, sorry, the chicken and egg argument. You know, we, the routes that do perform get a little more love. I mean, they're easier. It's kind of like an easy investment, you know, to put more in there, but we can't leave the other routes. You know, we won't take from any other route unless it's totally not performing. And that was done as part of, we actually dropped three routes last year as part of that, excuse me, and with the March service changes, part of the Bus System Recovery Plan. The Northeast Tacoma Route was, we were lucky if we'd get three riders a day, and that route has been bad as long as I've been here for 11 years. Certain routes just don't perform. We had a route in the, actually in Tacoma, too, in the Stadium District that was a school bus supplemental. It would only run AMP, and it would supplement the high school, and that wasn't ridden at all either, so we dropped those, so. I don't have a good answer. It's, you know, it's, it's a dilemma, certainly for us.
And I'm trying to formulate in my mind and so forth, what would be needed to improve the volume of ridership within a particular area? Shelters, covered shelters is one, which we don't have many. We don't have, not all ours are covered, and it rains in Milton as often as it doesn't.
Yeah, let me look into that to you, because there is a shelter, a plan that we're rolling out, and we've got funding for additional shelters, so let me, I'm sorry I didn't bring that with me, but I'll find out for you, because you might have some new shelters coming. There's a, we got an earmark from Marilyn Strickland, Congresswoman Strickland, who's a former mayor of Tacoma, for two and a half million, and then we got another million from, I can't remember where offhand, but there's a new shelter that's coming that's got much smaller glass panes that can't be broken, a new black shelter. So let me see, because we're not concentrating those in one area. We're supposed to be putting them everywhere, so. I could find that out for you, too.
I'm trying to find talking points to.
Yes, yeah.
Build the ridership on your system than what we presently have. What we presently have has been longstanding for a lot of years, but we're smaller.
Right.
Well, we're not as small as we used to be when I first came here, but.
But you can't tell your citizens that's all you get. That's not, that's not fair either, so I'm with you. I'd be happy to do a little research. Give me, you know, give me a week or so, and I'll put together some talking points. I could do an executive summary, both short term and long term, as well as the shelter investments and kind of anything that's, you know, enhances a customer experience. We also have a bench at every stop program, so that's coming, too. We are doing that system-wide, so you won't have any more poles on the ground without a bench.
And a lot of ours is a little bit of local traffic.
Right.
Within our adjacent cities or ourselves, and the amenities to use the service isn't as good as it is in some other cities.
You got that. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Covered shelters, buses that are going closer to shopping proximity and so forth, and, you know, multiple chances to get off the bus. So I think a little city like ours, and while we're almost 10,000 people now, when I came here, it was 2,700. So you see the growth with it, but just want to keep up with that.
Right, right, right. That's only fair. Yeah, let me do a little research, and if you'd give me a week or so, I'd gladly put together some information for you. I've got an idea.
I support Pierce County Transit.
I appreciate that, thank you.
But, yeah, got to look out for the people that I am responsible to speak.
And you're telling me, "Help me help you", you know, Pierce County, and we appreciate that, so I've got some ideas. I'd give you as little or as much as you want. I'm thinking of something, an executive summary on both those, both short term and long term. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for listening to me.
Planning Manager Stahlnecker, and then Councilmember Cedar.
I just want to add, Darren had mentioned that we have met, and their group has also met with like shape and different things, and a lot of that is to make sure that as we go through the comp plan, that we are coordinating efforts, and I wanted to kind of add that we are doing that. The, where our bus routes are is along Meridian and along Milton Way, and those are the areas that we are looking to increase multifamily housing and density and make those more compact, which is exactly what you want to do. Those are the areas you want to make. You want to put those along the bus line so that people can use the buses and have less cars. So what if, they were very excited that, yes, we are planning it, because they have areas that are. excited that, yes, we are planning it because they have areas that are planning growth where there's not bus lines, and then that doesn't align. So I just wanted to kind of toss that out, that, that the city is doing a great job of working with our jurisdiction, or, you know, our quasi jurisdictions to make sure that we're all on the same page. So we're, and that will increase because those lines is where the growth is going, that those lines will get used more as that growth comes.
Councilmember Cedar?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Just to echo a couple of things that you said that I'm very excited about, see the, kind of the crisscrossing through Milton with new routes is, is excellent, something that's desperately needed to get down into the valley from here directly. So that's wonderful to see. Also, very great, every time I talk to Pierce Transit, any representative, I always want to mention the shelters idea because that is something that we desperately need here.
Yeah, I'll get, I'm gonna get some figures for you, find out exactly where those are going in.
Very excited to hear that there's a grant, or funding available now for that because that was a, a sticking point.
Solarlit, too.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be awesome. So the question I have for you, though, is about kind of the scenarios. It was unclear to me, is, you talked about it as though, you know, if we get additional funding, we'll essentially extend those scenarios, right, for more hours. Is that funding asked coming? Can you anticipate when that? I mean, I assume there's going to be some kind of?
No, but what we will do is make sure that we have cost assumptions across the board. So again, you know, for this scenario, it would cost this much more in, in, in service and in buses and in additional operators, additional buildings. If this, this scenario would cost this much more. So we're going to make sure that it's very clear. And it doesn't have to be all or nothing, you know, it could be incremental. It could be kind of like a, a plus, not, not necessarily B, but, you know, a, a little bit more A, that type of thing. So it's not an all or nothing scenario. And we think in the end, you know, in 20 years' time, there'll probably be a blend based on growth and development and funding and stuff, you know. But does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And that's kind of what I was getting at, is can you foresee, are you going to come back in six months and say, now's the time, or now you have that champion, or now you have someone coming forward? I, I'm just trying to anticipate when we're going to get that asked because I'd love to support that more directly. Follow up there, you had mentioned the, the performance of the 500 route. I don't see that designated on here as BRT.
No, that was, that was one that we would be looking at for the fast, frequent, and reliable. Really for BRT, we learned when we finished our stream system expansion study in March of 2023, that the 1, 2, and the 3 were the three best candidates. We looked at the 402 and the 4, and they were, the 402 is really, really long. And once it gets out of downtown Puyallup, you know, Sounder Station up to Federal Way, it's almost like a highway express route. So we didn't see the need really because it, it goes pretty quickly up there. But certainly something from the Sounder Station to South Hill, yes.
Well, I imagine 500, 501 is kind of overlapped with the link. Is that the expectation?
Yes, yeah. But they wouldn't go away, though. The 5, we, we think there's going to be a need for redundancy. So we don't.
And that's kind of what I'm getting at, too, because Milton gets left out of the lake.
No, 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 no. Yeah, we don't, no. If anything, we'd be building those routes up, not, not, not taking them down or reducing the service at all. Because the growth shows that there's going to be a need for lots of different types of transit, not just one or the other. I always, you know, they've talked about sound transit originally a couple of years ago. They might get rid of the express buses, and now they're saying that's, that's a mistake because they said even with the light rail going all the way to Tacoma Dome Station, there's still going to be enough need for people that want to get on a fast bus to get up to downtown Seattle and back. So we think there's enough people coming that there'll be a need for all, all the transit, not just one, one of the other modes.
This is great. Thanks again.
Oh, my pleasure.
A lot of exciting developments.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for our presenter this evening? Okay. We really appreciate your time this evening.
I want to make sure I write down the name before I go.
So council, we have five items this evening, and the first page, our first one's on page 21 of your packet. It is a recommendation or a vote to appoint to the Pierce Transit Board. So it, I'll just read what they are telling us to do. So due to the recent composition change in the Pierce Transit Board that occurred as a result of the Pierce Transit Board Composition Review Meeting that was convened on June 26, 2024, the cities and towns of Fife, Milton, Edgewood, Pacific, Auburn, Stillicum, and Ruston, we were sent a letter from Pierce Transit requesting nominations of an elected representative to represent the seven cities, that is a typo, not three, on the Pierce Transit Board. So they have given us two individuals to choose from, one from Fife and one from Stillicum. And we need to choose one to represent the seven cities on our behalf. Normally, I'd take a motion, but I figured maybe because there's two options, we could have a discussion first. Or do you want to make a motion?
I, I, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, perfect.
I move to elect Doug Fagundis to represent the city of Milton on the Pierce Transit Board.
Second.
Perfect. So it's been moved by Councilmember Cedar and seconded by Councilmember Hall to elect Doug Fagundis to represent the city of Milton on the Pierce Transit Board. Councilmember Cedar?
Thank you. I didn't speak to Doug about this specific election. However, he currently represents us on the Pierce Transit Board, and he's done an excellent job when I've interacted with him in the past. So I would just support him wholeheartedly for this. I think he represents our community well, and I think Fife is more aligned with Milton's interests than Stillicum, also having the experience on the board. I think he, he very much deserves our support and continued support. So I, you know, obviously I'm going to support my own motion, but I would encourage you all to support him as well. He's been a great advocate for this area, the FME area.
Councilmember Hall?
I can improve on that.
Uh, Councilmember Wayland?
Forgive me. Can you clarify whom?
Doug Fagundis, he, he currently sits on Fife City Council, but he is also currently our representative for the area on the Pierce Transit Board.
And that's, I was fairly clear about whom you were speaking, and I support your discussion. Thank you.
Uh, or, excuse me, Mayor Portem?
Thank you. Not that you'd definitely need my, you know, my agreeance, but I've known Doug for years. I knew him initially through the Chamber of Commerce. And he and his wife had, I was telling them that they had a business. It was for youth. It was a, you wouldn't necessarily always think of a billiards hall as, but it was a place for them to come and get together. And like I said, I knew him on the, on the chamber. He was, he let us have our ambassador meetings at their business, which is kind of cool. Then we went and headed up the chamber office. I liked it better there. Not that we played pool. But I've known him personally, known him professionally, and I would definitely agree with having him represent us.
Any other comments from council? Uh, Councilmember White?
I just have a couple of questions for Tim, since I, I, I know neither of these, of these people. How long has Doug been on the board, do you know?
I do not know that. I, I've interacted with the Pierce Transit Board on occasion, just with some of my regional work, just like asking questions, some of the questions that I've asked of other presenters here regarding routes. And then I've interacted with, uh, former mayor, is she still mayor? Kim Roscoe? Kim Roscoe, when she was the, I don't recall what her title was, but we'd talked a lot, and Doug had come up and occasionally kind of joined those discussions.
Of course, all of that makes you the expert.
I, unfortunately, yeah, I unfortunately don't know that much about Doug specifically. However, the Pierce Transit Board has reliably, I mean, as we can see, right, we're getting new routes in Milton, which is a really big deal for Milton. They're, they're clearly doing good work for us.
How big is, how big is this board, do you know?
Well, it's going to change with this. The composition is now changing, so it's going to be more representatives representing fewer locations. That's my understanding.
Okay. So each representative represents a specific city or a set of cities?
Correct. That's my understanding.
Yes. I just don't remember what the breakdown was of it. We could find out and send it to you guys, but I know, I just don't remember.
Okay. I just, I just wish that one or both of these gentlemen would have come today and advocated for themselves. But so we can learn what it is that Doug has been advocating on our behalf because we don't know. So.
Yeah, we did invite both of them.
But thanks for the input that you, you have given.
I mean, if, like I was saying before the meeting, like I personally haven't worked with either of them, but I always try to support, if we can, if we don't have any negative feedback on, from anybody, our neighboring cities because we work, we, I work well with Fife, I work with Edgewood, we as a city do as well. So then it's easy to go to them and be like, hey, you got to advocate for this for us. And so I've always felt like if we can nominate Fife or Edgewood, it's, we're always on the winning side.
Yeah, that makes sense, and I'm agreeable to that.
Any other comments? Okay. It is an, oh, Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I asked for the clarification in the name because it is somebody I've known for a while with his dedication to the city of Fife and the peripheral areas around. So I fully do support that. But I just wanted to be clear on, forgive me, I still have hearing problems. Who you had mentioned, and I do support him.
Perfect. This is an action item. Are there any comments from the audience? It's been moved by Councilmember Cedar and seconded by Councilmember Hall to elect Doug Fagundis to represent the city of Milton on the Pierce Transit Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried 6-0. Moving on to our next item this evening, it is on page 27 of your packet. It is ordinance 2092-24 for revisions to chapters 12.12 and 12.20, use and maintenance of the right-of-way. I will pass the floor over to our planning manager, and then following her review, we'll need a motion to open up the floor for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So this was presented a couple weeks ago, a couple meetings ago at a study session. And just to recap, that this is basically, it, we're, we're requesting the repeal of 1212 because the items that it deals with is duplicated in other sections. And so it, we are trying to consolidate all of the design guidelines and regulations of streets. And so 1212 is being recommended to, for repeal. And then the amendments to chapter 1220, hope to expand and clarify the rights and responsibilities related to sidewalks and right-of-ways in order to aid in maintaining safe and clean sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and streets. There was a couple questions that came up at the study session, so hopefully we are able to address them. The first is to clarify that the RCWs do specify that, do authorize local jurisdictions to require private property owners to construct, reconstruct, repair sidewalks, gutters, and curbs. And that language is here. There are many local jurisdictions that have adopted very similar ordinances that do require private property owners to maintain sidewalks, planting strips that abut their property. This includes the cities such as Tacoma, Furcrest, Edmonds, Kirkland, and Duval. There was questions raised about liability. And so per the city attorney who is here tonight, the proposed sidewalks ordinance does not impose liability on private property owners for claims related to the private property's owner's alleged violations of the ordinance. So it doesn't put all of the liability responsibility on them just because they hadn't maintained it. And so again, if you have further questions on that, the attorney is happy to address that. And then I wanted to point out three changes to the, I don't know if it's easier to use the red line or the clean copy. There's some general word changing by that, with my discussions and review by the attorney that don't change the heart of it. And then on the red line version, on page 32, num, uh, item subsection C, just simply added that the removal shall occur when we're dealing with snow, ice, and any kind of obstruction, that it shall be removed within 24 hours of the occurrence. It gives it a little more specific timeline than just at some point. And then I did remove, the red line version shows what the, the previous suggestion was. So the, based on the conversation, I've removed subsection D, which did put more of the liability on the specific property owner. So we've just removed that section altogether. So if there's, that's where we are at. Hopefully, if there's any, again, if there's any questions or further discussion, happy to do that. The staff does recommend approval of the amendments tonight.
Councilmember Cedar?
I move to approve ordinance 2092-24, repealing chapter 12.12 and amending chapter 12.20, use and maintenance of right-of-way.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember Cedar and seconded by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 2092-24, repealing chapter 12.12 and amending chapter 12.20, use and maintenance of the right-of-way. Councilmember Cedar, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Senator Stolnicker, thank you very much for, for kind of going back and answering the questions that we had. My concerns, both now and in some research of my own, well assuaged. I feel confident in this. So thank you for bringing this forward. It's a, it's a good clarification for us.
Uh, Councilmember Hall?
Again, thank you for going back and rereviewing my trepidations. It's been answered, so I appreciate it.
Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you for the work that's been invested in this. My curious question is, this is the first read of a law change, an ordinance. And this first read of the total document, our choices are an action. That's not, I don't believe that's the way we're supposed to do it. We're supposed to go through these documents.
This is a, this is a second.
Find everything that is in this document without interruption, please. And we usually have one reading and then a second reading, and we adopt it. Considering the fact that we've had it in a study session does not preclude us or exclude us from having a first reading. So the general public who is listening, hopefully there's a lot of people listening, this is their first opportunity, you might say. And also, it's the council's first opportunity for feedback from citizens who may have some inclusive information that would be appropriate. The most important thing to do here is to have this in the first reading, not an action, but a discussion of the document that we first got to see over this weekend. And I'm not sure how many, how many residents may have had the opportunity to see this and so forth. I think we're just a little bit fast. I believe that we've always in the past had a reading of this, an ordinance, a law, rules, in front of the public, which what we're doing tonight, a reading and then a discussion about implementing it into law or not. So I'm a little bit concerned that we're hasty in doing this. I, there are things in here I like. There are things in here I'd still like to understand a little bit better because I only saw this document as of this weekend in its entirety.
This is the second reading. The entirety was presented on September 9, 2024.
That was a study session?
Correct, but it was the first reading.
That was a study session. Now we have a law in front of us. And I believe it requires that we take the time to do that, looking for the general public who's listening to this particular meeting, hopefully, have input. And I just think it's a little bit accelerated. We generally have two meetings and discussion at council, not planned, not, not study session, but at council to do, to define these things. So that's my concern. That's a little bit hasty on our part. I don't think we would suffer any negative conclusions by doing it in the process we have done for basically the last 20 years. You can have a discussion. I'm sorry, I wanted everybody's attention, even.
I, I think we've heard what you've had to say. And is it okay if I give you my response back?
Surely.
Okay. So we historically, 95% of the time, bring an ordinance to study session for you all to discuss with the public listening, and then bring it back as a second read to the next meeting. We did this with this one. Now, there are some that we have brought three times, or four times, or five times. But we did say at the last meeting that we had this, this will be coming back for approval on this day. At this, no point did anyone say, we want a third read or a fourth read. You don't have to vote for it if you don't want. It's your, it's 100% you're right. But we're.
It's the process. I'm sorry.
It's the same process as we've always had. Councilmember Preddy?
I objected to a lot of those processes also because they are not the same gravity that a ordinance structured is read. And the general public has an opportunity to see it and, and comment on. And the general public has an opportunity to see it and comment on it.
It was presented in ordinance format as well at the study session.
The study session is not a council meeting. It's a study session to see if that document is adequate. Andrew, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Council, Andrew Soming, City Attorney. So Councilmember Wayland, it sounds to me your concerns is that your position is that this constitutes a first reading of the ordinance, is that correct?
It constitutes a first rewrite, complete rewrite of the ordinance, first time. That needs to be disseminated to the council and so forth, and given the public the opportunity to see what the final language is. This is the first time.
Understood. So I'm reviewing Councilmember, the council's Rules of Procedure, section 9.8, which regulates the number of readings required for ordinances. It provides that there shall be one reading of an ordinance prior to any action adoption of the council, unless a second reading is required by state statute, a city code, or on matters pertaining to things such as land use regulations, taxes, fees, charges, penalties, assessments, comprehensive plans, and budgets and levies. So my interpretation of section 9.8 is that this does not likely fall under the category of requiring a second reading, and that under the council rules of procedure, a first reading is all that's necessary. But I do understand your concerns, Councilmember, that you feel that, given the revisions between the first reading and now the second reading, that you wish to have the public to weigh in. And as the mayor indicated, I think that is a valid concern that perhaps could be expressed in what you're saying to council now as well as your vote.
Technically, this is the first reading. Technically, this is the first finished document being read.
I think that is a debatable point, but even if it was a first reading, council may take action after a first reading under the council rules of procedure.
It's very, life has changed in the city council in the city of Milton. We brought these always as a document with the complete change, finished change. And that constitutes the first time we have read it completely changed. I didn't pull out all my study session minutes and so forth and so forth and use those as a first reading. This is a first reading of it. It is most suitable to give the general public the time to see a finished document before we put it into law.
Understood.
And that's the way we have done business quite a while. I've been on council 20 years. It's changed a little bit over the last few years. But there is no hurt in taking what we consider to be the finished document, allowing the general public to peruse it, or have discussion with anybody within the city, yourself maybe, if you would allow that, to make sure that it is a final uncontested, a non-hidden document. This pops up pretty quick, and it doesn't give people much of a chance to peruse it and discuss with the people whom they have elected to be on the city council. I don't, I've gone through it, and I'm trying to find all my previous study session information to see what was changed, what has changed. Was that something we fully discussed? And I'm not sure I find all that clarity in the document. And I'm trying to take the time myself as a council member, not two days, to make a decision on something that we've discussed over the last several weeks. So forgive me for being my trepidations, for taking something that I even over this weekend have not gone through it line by line, page by page.
Understood. Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Parretti?
I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I want to disagree completely with our last provocation or commitment here of that. We've had plenty of time to view this. It's been in a study session. I've had multiple conversations with people around the city about it because I had a lot of concerns when we first discussed it. And so I will support this 100%. And I believe we've gone through it enough.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, it is an action item. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay. It is been moved by Councilmember Cedar and seconded by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 2092-24, repealing chapter 12.12 and amending chapter 12.20, use and maintenance of the right of way. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Carried five one.
With comment?
Council, our attorney Soming, can I just ask for a clarification on Robert's rules? So we took a vote, and Councilmember Wayland would like to vote no with a comment. Is that, can he save it for his council report? Or what would be the appropriate way to handle that?
That is an interesting question, Mayor. I've never actually been asked that. When all else fails, I do recognize that council does have the ability to waive and bend Robert's rules as it sees fit. So I would leave that up to the discretion of council at this point. But his vote has been registered as no.
Okay. I think, I don't see any question, or any, I don't, no? Move on, we did the vote, we're moving on? If you'd like to hold your comment for your council report, I think that would be appropriate.
No, I think this is an appropriate time.
Councilmember Wayland, your fellow council members have not agreed to let you comment on this after the vote. Council, our attorney Soming just said it'd be at the discretion of council to bend Robert's rules, which is fine. But everyone sitting here has not agreed to let you comment. I would recommend you save it for your council report.
I haven't heard an answer.
He gave you an answer.
I haven't heard him say, "No, you can't," or "Yes, you can." That's an answer.
Okay, council, you all shook your heads, but I need to hear you say yea or nay to a comment. Councilmember Cedar?
I move that we move to the next agenda item on the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any, it's in first and second, is there any opposition to moving forward? We're going to move forward. Moving on to our next item this evening. It is on page 39 of your packet. This is a discussion only, and no action will be taken. It is an update on the 2025 to 2030 Hazard Mitigation Update. I'm going to turn the floor back over to the planning manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is just, as you are hopefully aware, we annually review the city's hazard mitigation plan. We are finishing up the 2024 version as part of the process that we are required to do, and we work in coordination with Pierce County. The city of Milton will be soon starting the 2025 through 2030 Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so as we're closing one out, we start working on the other. The update includes reviews of sections of our current plan for accuracy and formal adoption by resolution by city council. This update will follow the same process as our current plan that we're finishing up on. It is a joint effort of various city departments. Tricia Summers has been leading that in attending all the meetings. Public Works Director, myself, chief of all, contributed as needed. So this is just part of our public notice city council process to just make you aware that we are finishing up the one, starting the other, and you will get more information as we go through that process.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Cedar?
Just curious, is there any major additions? I know in the last decade or so, we've sometimes seen big additions of like a new natural disaster or something, a new category. Is there anything that you're contemplating? Or are we too premature to even get to that point?
I don't, I don't think so. I did sit through the last meeting with the city clerk, and it's more that they're, they are sort of like rearranging the categories, combining some and everything. But I didn't think there was anything drastically new, just sort of kind of resorting and organizing. I will say, because we had, at the table that I manned at Milton Days, it was, we had some maps that they had provided us. And Milton actually sits pretty good with hazards because we're up higher that everything kind of goes to Fife. So that was kind of a nice, for us to look at. So, but yes, if there's anything majorly changes, we'll definitely point that out.
Thanks.
Mayor Potem?
Did you mention when this would be coming back?
I don't.
Do you know about how long it will be until we deal with the final update?
Tricia, the current one, are we going to adopt? So the current one we're working on will come back by the end of the year to adopt. This is also, this is actually the requirement to notify you that we'll be starting the next one soon after.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to our next item. It is on page 41 of your packet. It is ordinance 209624, the first read for a budget amendment. So this is not an action item. So I'll turn the floor over to our finance director, and then we'll open up the floor for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The proposed ordinance provides adjustments to the 2024 budget as adopted by city council on December 4, 2023, and amended on August 19, 2024. This is the second ordinance amending the 2024 budget and reflects changes that have occurred since adoption of the original budget. This amendment incorporates changes to the wage scale only. It removes the building official position and adds a building inspector position. The building official position requires a very unique combination of education and experience that not many applicants can fulfill. So the position has been vacant for more than a year. Staff believes that a building inspector position will attract more candidates and better fit the current needs of the city. Also included in the packet is a description of the proposed building inspector position.
Councilmember Cedar?
That's, the last thing you mentioned is actually just the only question I have about this. So it's a position description for building inspector, but when you go to essential duties and responsibilities, it says, although the primary duties of the building official are listed below. So I expect that's just a typographical error, but that's not what we mean, right? Okay.
Thanks for catching that.
All right. Thank you. That's all the questions.
Do you note that, Planning Manager Sonnaker? Yes, okay. The union didn't catch that either. The union didn't catch that either. Are there any questions on this? This was a topic that we talked at the budget, or excuse me, I keep saying budget retreat, the council retreat regarding a change in jobs. Okay. Mayor Potem?
So this position would be, under the planning managers, you would supervise, manage them, correct?
Yes. So currently, the building official is under the supervision of the planning manager. So this would be the same. Yeah. So the hope, unfortunately, we just haven't had any qualified candidates that, and the two that we did were out of state and decided they were sort of just feeling it and weren't ready to move up here yet. So my hope is that if we do a building inspector, who can also do some basic plan review, it's a lot less qualifications. That hopefully opens up our candidate pool. It is, it's not, you know, it just takes some time and effort to get those other certifications. So maybe if we had a good candidate and they took the position, maybe in a couple years, they could have the qualifications for building official, and then we could bring that position back and move them up. Would be my long-term hope. So I'm just, I think this will, like I said, I'm hoping this gets us a broader range because the requirements drop down. And we have some great third party that can help support that person in that role as they're moving and learning. So I think we would be okay with that.
Yeah, probably not very efficient if you're not getting a lot of candidates that.
Yeah.
So, you know, yeah, as long as you can get a better pool of candidates, then yeah. Of course, that's a preferential position to be in.
Any other questions from council? Okay, so this will come back on the 21st, the 21st meeting, I believe that's the date. Okay, moving on to our last item this evening. It's on page, excuse me, 51 of your packet. It's ordinance 2095-24. And I did just notice there's a typo on the attachment, so I do apologize for that. So council, at the last meeting, regular meeting, we passed a resolution to change the study session time to 4:00 PM. And then as our city clerk was updating the necessary locations of that information, we realized that it was actually in code. So what we are asking is for you to adopt ordinance 2095-24 to update section 2.04.010 to reflect a 4 o'clock start time for study sessions. Councilmember Parretti?
I move to approve ordinance 2095-24 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Parretti and seconded by Councilmember White to approve ordinance 2095-24 as presented. Councilmember Parretti?
I understand it's kind of a cleanup through the ordinance process here, but I also appreciate the comments that we had from the public that came in and talked about this too, that it wasn't going to be, majority, it seemed, it wasn't going to be an adverse thing. And I think it's also positive that if we find that it is a problem down in the future, we can change it to another time or come back. So, but I think it's willing to try this and for the purposes. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember White, do you want to speak to your second?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Does it need to be duplicated in a ordinance as well as the council procedures? Is there a reason that it needs to be in both places?
That is a great question that I did ask our city attorney. And he felt out of transparency, and I'll let him speak on it more, that it should be in code.
Okay.
Is that good enough, or do you want him to speak on it?
It just seems like it just opens up a area of error.
Yeah.
In the future.
I agree.
So.
Yeah, a great point. So essentially, under the Open Public Meetings Act 4230-075, all that's required of council is to essentially provide the state registry with the regular dates and times of council meetings, both study sessions and regular meetings. And that is simply all that's required. I recognize that the city council or the city's website does also have those dates posted as well. But it was my recommendation that, to ensure that everyone is well aware of the dates and times of council, it would be kind of change in the code this way, and it maximizes public participation. However, if council feels that we should just simply repeal that provision of the code, that it's simply not necessary, then I think that would be perfectly legal as well.
Well, I mean, I don't necessarily think it should be repealed. I just think it should be in one place. So I think it should be removed in one or the other.
Yeah. Maybe we, the clerk and I actually, because we really only want it in one spot, but we did look at other cities, and they do have it in their actual code. So I guess maybe if in the future council wants to change the time again, we could take it out of the resolution and leave it in the code. But for now, since the resolution's already been updated.
It's not a big deal.
Yeah. But just to throw that out there so that if you all want to go back to a different time, then at that time, we could just reference code in the resolution and then only have to do one. But we did find that other cities do have it in their code. So we agreed with the attorney on it. Mayor Potem?
Thank you. Yeah. I like the flexibility. And I liked in our discussion that it became clear that if this doesn't work, because there were some people who weren't sure if they could consistently, council members who couldn't consistently be at study session, that then we could always go back and change it to the, you know, to the 7 o'clock time. But it's kind of like, give it a try and see if it works. And then, because we can always go back and change it, that's the, yeah. That was the selling point to me.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. It is an action item. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience? It has been moved by Councilmember Paredes and seconded by Councilmember White to approve ordinance 2095-24 as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried 6-0. Moving on to council reports, we'll start with Mayor Portem this evening.
Thank you. As I was mentioning to the chief before the meeting, that even though it was a pain for a while with the repaving of Milton Way, boy, that's beautiful. I enjoyed driving on it and not fast. It's nice and slow to really enjoy it, which segues into, I also appreciate the left turn light at 19th. That's, I don't know. I mean, it's like it should have been there for years. And a question that I was going to ask of the chief, you kind of brought up the chicane, the S curve that's down on 20th. Now, is that going to be permanent? Okay, so then they're going to change it back. And we're really enjoying it. But it truly, it does, it really slows traffic down great. It's not like it's that big of a deal. But I've still seen people just fly around that thing. It's insane. Okay. Because it definitely needs it there. I mean, that made a world of difference because, you know, people just either going west or going east to just fly. But thank you.
Councilmember White?
I don't really have anything, although after Councilmember Whitaker's comments, I'm going to try and learn to enjoy driving to Fife. As before, I have not. I will try my best to enjoy it on my next trip. Thank you.
Councilmember Paredes?
It's unbelievable, but I've had comments from people that they enjoyed on Milton Way too, which is really strange that he said that. Because it's like, I guess that's something to enjoy. I want to also echo, I've had bus drivers say they really appreciate that left-hand turn lane. It's getting them in there on their routes and getting kids delivered and picked up and stuff, and that's good. And also, I'm liking the street sweeper out there coming around. It seems like he's out there quite a bit, and that's a good thing. There's a lot of things going on that's causing debris in our roadway, especially with the construction and stuff, but I really appreciate that happening.
Councilmember Cedar?
Nothing to report, thanks.
Councilmember Hall?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions and one for Tony, if you don't mind. I'm not really sure if we have in code how far back from an intersection vehicles would be allowed to park. Generally, the state of Washington says 20 feet. We may not have that specific number in our code, but I think the precedent is the state of Washington's code. We have issues on 13th, and you've been there a few times, both on Oak and 13th. And some of the, one of the vehicles is covered over with masking. You can hardly see what it is. And it's been discussed with a few of your officers and so forth, and they said, "We didn't have it in our code." But the state of Washington's code supersedes that. So if you would kindly... On Milton Way, I'd like the work that's being done, but the question, please, is the center markers that are there temporarily, I hope, are not in the middle of the street? They're juxtaposed to the right-hand side if you're traveling east. It's a narrower lane. That lane is much narrower than the lane next to it. And at the corner of Main and Milton Way, you've got 15th Main and you've got Milton Way. They did change some of the curbing, but it is still difficult if you're coming off 15 to turn on Milton Way, and you're going to turn back a little bit to the right and then get in the lane. There's a kind of an awkward curbing that they put in. Just a thought, I'm not an expert, if you would take a look at it. On Taylor on 23rd, it happened this evening, and it was just before I came to council. I think there's a time schedule for them to do roadwork, and they had stop signs on Taylor at the intersection of 23rd, and because they're moving gravel and so forth, I think for a sidewalk base. But isn't there a timeframe that's supposed to stop by? Isn't that like 6 o'clock at night? I thought it was earlier. And the fact that they only had one individual on both ends with the stop sign and so forth, they did a good job, but it just seemed very awkward that there was limited amount of people managing that. And not really sure. And a secondary question is, has the culvert between Surprise Lake and the Hail of Ose been embedded under 23rd? Do you know?
Yes, there's a culvert.
Well, there has been a culvert forever, but it was supposed to increase in size rather dramatically because I think there's three different culverts stacked to transport the water from Surprise Lake back to the creek. And I always understood that it was going to be enlarged significantly. So I don't know. It doesn't appear that they're putting in the sidewalks and so forth right now on the west side and, you know, the entries and so forth. And I've never seen 23, I've never seen the road opened up to include the culvert change. It has always been recommended, and at one time, the city was going to do it because of backup on Surprise Lake. Could you just let me know if that's still in process? If it has been done or not? My understanding was that was part of the development process, that they would put that larger culvert under the road. Thank you. Appreciate that. Do we have a timeframe, kind of a real timeframe for the traffic light surveillance to start? I mean, what's the update on that project?
When I had talked with the city administrator in Piala, they are taking it to council, he believes, he hopes, October 23rd. So until we get a signed agreement back, we can't start the back office build. So our hope is, not this school year, but by the start of next school year, that we'll finally have this in the ground and going in all the back office. We need at least six months to build. So again, very administrative-laden process, and there is, we have partners that are involved in this, and so getting it all the way through is very laborious, but we hope to have it by next school year.
Why am I depressed? Why am I not feeling very comfortable and confident with that? Kind of the things we should know right up front that should take in place and so forth. But I understand. I understand bureaucracy and complacency. But thank you for that update. So if anybody asks me and want to tell me they're going to get caught until next school year, and there's been questions about it, and it's back to its old circumstances where people coming off of 28th on the Milton Way, nobody's stopping at the stop bar. I, myself, I think it'd be nice if we started to do it physically and let people know. And the same thing with the school zone and so forth. We're going into over two years, two years of discussion with this to get something done. I appreciate the straightforwardness with that. One other thing I'll mention is that I did go to a service for an employee of the City of Milton. Donna Dobson had passed away. Very nice, very nice gathering down in Sumner. Quite a few people and so forth, quite a few people from the City of Milton. And her passing has been hard on a lot of people. So patience with the city and patience with the folks in the office. And that's all I can add for tonight.
Director Madden, do you have anything this evening? Planning Manager Stahlnecker?
Just a couple of quick things. We had a resident come in today, and amongst the discussion, she complimented all of the work along the streets, landscaping, the beautification. She said the city is just looking great and that she noticed, and she wanted us to know that. And then I had been asked, I think a couple of meetings ago, to, about that the fact that the church that's on Milton Way is using the postal service parking lot. I did reach out to them, and they actually have written permission from the postal service to use their parking lot on Sunday. So they are using it legally. And that's it for tonight.
No comment.
Chief?
Well, crime still continues to be a problem. There has been some recent annual report that's been done nationwide. Washington is not faring very well in its crime statistics. I shared that with the leadership team. I'll send it out to council so that you can look at it. It was recently shared within the last two weeks by the Director Stran of the Colonel Justice Training Commission for the State of Washington, and I'll share that with you. But the good news is, is you have some dedicated crime fighters here in the City of Milton doing the best they can to hold back the tides of criminal activity. And, but, they are working very hard. And just to remind you, we have two vacancies. We have several people in backgrounds, and so we hope to have those concluded in the next month or so. We've had backgrounds start and stop because officers have gotten picked up by other departments, and so this is a very competitive market for law enforcement because there's a limited number of individuals. So we have two vacancies. We have Officer Haney. I spoke to him last Friday, and he continues to make a recovery, but we have no idea on when he might return. So it could be four months, maybe longer, but he still continues towards his recovery. Right now, he can walk with the assistance of a cane, and so he continues to work on his recovery. We had his second officer, Officer Corporal Sarf, who suffered a torn bicep during a domestic call. And so he will be gone for a couple of months while he has surgery on his bicep. So that gives us a total of four that we have currently down in the police department. So when you see those officers, wave to them and thank them for the dedicated, because there are a few that are really carrying the weight of the city, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that we continue to preserve the way of life here in the City of Milton. So again, we can't do it without you, and if you see something, say something.
Attorney Soaming, we skipped over you. Did you have anything you wanted to add this evening?
Nothing to add, but it's great to see everyone.
So just two reminders for me. So next week, the study session is at 4 o'clock because we did it as a special meeting since the ordinance doesn't go into effect for five days after publication. And then just a reminder that this weekend is the annual craft bazaar. It's the 33rd annual, Friday from 12 to 6, and Saturday from 10 to 4. We will have food trucks both days from noon to 4, and we'll have our local Longhorn BBQ on Friday here on campus, and then Starvin Marvin will be here on Saturday. So if you have time, just stop by and say hello. I think even if you don't feel like shopping, if you can have a presence, it's good for our vendors. So is there anything for the good of the order this evening? Okay. So seeing that all items have been concluded, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:24 p.m.